We'll call this March meeting of the Huntsville City Council to order. I'm not Mayor Dodson, he is out of town. He's actually at the National League of Cities meeting in Washington DC, their annual meeting. So he's, I spoke with him actually for just a minute earlier today and things are going well. He actually saw President Biden speak before the National League earlier today. And I believe he's going to be talking with all three members of our congressional delegation, the Congressman Womack and the Senators Bozeman and Cotton while he's up there as well. So to put it in good words for Huntsville. So, but anyway, that's why I'm in charge of the meeting as Mayor Pro Tim. So we'll go on to next item of business, which is the roll call to establish quorum. Ms. Boyd, if you'll call roll.
Counselor Oof.
Here.
Lacy.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Roden.
Here.
Mytholler.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
I have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's rise for the invocation that'll be offered tonight by Mr. Ellis. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Lacy. Go ahead.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that all of that have gathered tonight for this meeting. Please give us strength, courage, knowledge, and wisdom to make good decisions for the city. And bless those who are traveling to this meeting to the house. For your sons, Jesus Christ will bring them.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone may be seated. We will go on with the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Counselors can add or delete items. And I'll need a motion to approve as these are submitted or amended.
I take a motion we approve.
Second.
All right, that motion was made by Mr. Roden, seconded by Mr. Ford. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, the agenda is approved. We'll move on to introduction of special guests. Is Mr. Nelson here? All right. This is Mr. David Nelson. He had spoken to Mayor Dodson about a topic regarding senior centers a lot, or it looks like, from what I read, it's a multi-generational thing. So, Mr. Nelson, the floor is yours at this time, sir.
Well, thank you, thank you. I'll clean it up later.
Okay.
Just interruption. You know, the thing is, when I met Mayor Travis a couple of weeks ago, I said I wanted to put together a program that has been on my heart to do for several years, and wanted to start a pilot program here in Huntsville. So, that's the lead in to my meeting with him at the senior center. And again, my name, who we are, what we're doing, my name is David Nelson. And I'm here with my lovely wife, Carlina. Okay? And, thank you, thank you. And we've been married since all of November 3rd, 2022. Got married during COVID. Took a chance and said, well, is she going to make it? She is, I decided she's going to survive. But you know, the thing is, that what we're doing here with this pilot program that we're presenting to y'all, is I want to ask and seek your permission for what we're going to do. And the point is to be able to grow a relationship with the city of Huntsville. And we're developing my third and final nonprofit organization called Aha.Underuniversity. Okay? And the purpose of this is really in the title of what AHA stands for. It stands for a healthy aging university. And what we're doing, I, this is where I met him and Mayor Travis and talked about his Grandma Bonnie. I'm doing this in celebration of my own grandma Claudia, to honor her legacy and her memory, to honor her, because the thing is, that what we're doing is our, it's an attempt to co-create true wealth, which what my grandma taught me as a kid was, true wealth is your health. And as a result of what's going on in the world, and our little part of the, where we live here, I live in Rogers, but I volunteer at the senior center and do a bunch of different things in this area. And I've fallen in love with the folks out here, because I have grown up with farming-type values that are long since dead, and we want to try to bring some of those values back and bring attention to the folks of this area. I just had a little lady call me tonight. My wife and I have an insurance brokerage, we try to help people, and she's saying that, you know, they're having problems with her husband who has dementia, and what's he going to do? Well, my health specialty was dementia care before I started this several years ago. And when people ask me, why did you get into dementia? I was preparing for my own old age. So, you know, it's just, we're all going to be there, we're all going to get sick, and we're all going to die. But in the meantime, what are we going to do with our time? And so, when I agreed to get married to my wife, and she proposed to me, she will deny that, but you know, I'm just telling you on camera, it's a, so, the thing is, that what we want to do, that's really unique and different, that we want to bring to the table tonight, is that we want to do this co-creation of wealth, your health, through healthy aging across generations, cultures, and countries, because from the very beginning, 32 years ago, when I was married to my first wife, our second child was born, we didn't have any health insurance. Now, I have a degree in psychology, a background in MBA, and did a lot of things even 32 years ago. And I got help for my wife, we lived in St. Louis at that time, where I'm originally from. I've been here 28 years, so I'm no longer a damn Yankee, I'm just a Yankee. So, you know, but a hillbilly at heart, so whatever you say about hillbillies, just make it fun. But the thing is, is that for the last 32 years, since 1992, when my son was born, I realized that healthcare was a huge problem. And it's even more of a problem today, right? I think we'll all agree. So, the thing is, is that with this 32 years of community organizing and bringing people together and working with mayors and governors and senators and all that, you don't need to hear my history, it just reminds me how freaking old I am. I told the mayor, I'm not politically correct, so you're going to have to excuse me. In June, I turned 70, my wife says, do you want to mention your age? I said, hell yes. You know, because getting married after 30 years of divorce, I have a new life, a new wife, I'm taking on one more last project, because I made a deal with God in 1992, that I would finish this project. I didn't know it would take this long, but you know, my time is not his time, he's going to do what he wants to do, right? That's just the way it is. So when I say, for example, across countries, the medical director that I picked out during COVID, I made a connection with some Indian doctors from India. And one of them has stayed with me this whole time, and she's now our medical director for that. So, I want to explain what I mean by, I am the CEO of this. Doesn't mean executive, no, no, no. I clean the bottles and do all the dishes and all that stuff, but it means community evangelist organizer. Because when God puts something on your heart, you have to do it, or you're going to pay a price. And I realized with my new wife, that that's what I'm doing. I'm paying the price, working two jobs and getting two businesses started. And thank God, I've got the energy to keep it going. So, the thing is, what is different with our AHA University? Well, we teach from the very beginning to older people, because again, I'm going to be 70, and I'm developing a pickleball league for 70-plus. If anybody's 70-plus or knows anybody that's older, you know, I've been a role model and an example of health for 65 years. So what y'all can say about David Nelson when you leave here, is you have now officially met Forrest Gump's son. My dad in the 1930s had all that hardware on him, just like, you know, y'all remember from that movie. Fortunately, in 1950s, when I was a kid, they just had to have a bar between my legs, so I walked like a duck for a year. And of course, the kids make fun of you with that, but I learned and developed compassion for other people who don't have the body that I have, because as a result of that, I have extremely strong legs. I was a soccer player and a football player, and just an athlete from the get-go, because when God takes one thing away, he increases something else, right? So, what is it that we're here to do? What I want to transfer to older people is what I call an AHA attitude of gratitude for every breath. What I learned in 15 years of dementia care, and being privileged to be at the death of over a dozen people as they're passing, is that every breath counts. And at my age, I'm not promised tomorrow. Some of y'all may think you've got tomorrow, I'm not too sure. And the way that world is going, who knows, right? Telling the truth. So let me tell you what I believe in. I believe that we've forgotten the meaning of the word freedom. I believe that we've forgotten the value and values of our grandparents, and the legacy of our founding fathers, that comes from farmers and rural families. And that's why I'm here tonight, to remind and to help people to remember that. I also believe that God needs to be in the center of all that we do, and I'm alive today doing my best to honor my promise to Him, to finish the job I started 32 years ago. This is my third and final, as I said, nonprofit organization. The point of Healthy Aging University is healthy aging education, but specifically, what are we doing? What we're doing is creating healthy aging fairs, that will be for free, that our organization's going to be sponsoring. That's the main thing I was talking to the mayor about. We want to do low-cost workshops, such as gut detox, oral health, proper breathing techniques, because even if you're sitting in a wheelchair, you, it's, there's ways to breathe better to have a better life, better quality of life. Because for me, it's all about the improving quality of life. The quantity, you know, who knows how long that's going to be, but to have a better quality of life. So that's number two. Number three is a dental giving campaign that we're developing right now. There is a meeting with an organization called Welcome Health out of Fayetteville, and they provide free dental services, limited, of course, to people who need it. And they also have some medical services as well. And as I introduced this concept to the Area Agency on Aging and other nonprofits, they weren't even aware of it. So, that's one thing we're doing. And the point of this is to, the dental giving program is to build a rating system for dentists in all of Northwest Arkansas, and not just to rate and evaluate dentists, but to control costs. And to do how I was helped as a young man to get my wife taken care of, we were put into a lottery system. You know, you had to qualify to get into this. And then, put my name in the hat, and I persisted and stayed with it, so we got the help. So, that's what I'm hoping will come out of this dental giving campaign, that we can provide some services that way. So that's number three. Number four is the fun part, is the, we are co-creating what I call intergenerational pickleball volunteer opportunities. So I brought my little pickleball case here, because I'm a very good pickleball player, I love it. And I've got a lot of folks up in Rogers and up and down the main road there, 49, to volunteer to help us with this. And they love the idea of the intergenerational pickleball play, because the point of it is like what happened with me and my wife. I realized, I'm not too old, I'm not dead yet, there's still more I have to give. And I want to congratulate the city councils, which I've worked with city councils for 32 years. You know, y'all actually care about your community, you wouldn't be here, right? Does that make sense? Right, I'm, you know, you're putting in your time, you're paying your dues, some of us don't have a lot of hair, you know, I know you relate to that. So, the point is, of doing this intergenerational pickleball play, is to work with community centers, high schools, colleges, to promote movement among older people, because when you stop moving, you start dying. Does that make sense? The other thing that is really cool about pickleball itself, as our starting point, is the social health aspects of it, that it's nice to get out and meet people if you've been divorced, or had a loss of spouse, or whatever. There's been a number of folks that have gotten married out of the Rogers Adult Wellness Center, which is the main place we play at right now. So, what we are doing is working in conjunction with the United States Pickleball Association, USSP, which is the seniors, and something called Arkansas Pickleball, which is another 501(c)(3). They came from the other side of the state, a guy by the name of Joe Dixon, and asked me if I would start a program, I paired working with high schools and colleges, and they're just getting started on that. So the hope with that is to get the college kids to volunteer and come here and teach some pickleball with some of the kids, or older folks, or whoever wants to do it. And I've gotten, at an insurance company, to put money into the pickleball there, so they're kind of happy with me. You know? So we're going to do what I call roving pickleball clinics, and provide snacks and dinners and do different things for people. So it's going to be a fun, a little picnic idea, you know? It's simple, but it's a way to get people together and talking. So, that's the point of that, and to bring it all together, for me, the most important part is the relationship I have with my wife and with God. And that has promoted heart healing for me, because after 30 years of divorce, I thought, no way, no woman's ever going to get past my screen, it's never going to happen. Well, I was wrong. So, the thing is, that this is the fun and the heart of what we're doing, I save that part for last. Because my message to the seniors is, your story is important. You are important. Your values are important. We need to have more intergenerational connection. The COVID scare has just torn us apart in so many different ways. And we let a lot of people die in nursing homes and hospitals alone, and that made me sick, because that was my specialty. So the point is, that what we're left with is a legacy of fear and anger, and a lot of people, what I've discovered over this last year, because my wife and I are now doing the Medicare insurance and other insurance together, so many people are afraid of their own body. They're afraid, oh my God, I'm going to get sick, I'm going to die. Well, guess what? We have a natural immune system, and I know how to activate that. And I've become something of an expert on reversing the effects of COVID. Not because I wanted to, but I had to. As an example, my wife took the vaccine, so I had to stop and think, what I know about this, will I take care of her when she gets sick? The answer is yes. No longer, no sooner do we get married, and a month later, she got the dad gum stop, and I turned it around within a couple days. So there is hope. And the thing is, that we are writing a pickleball love story, to hit people in the heart, and show that older folks are valuable. Every human being is important in God's eyes, right? Every single human being. And the point is, we want to show what is possible for one man and one woman that has a specific purpose and a plan, that we can, as a community, help to refocus our priorities, refocus our values on what's important. Older and younger generations need to come together again. That's the whole point of our story. And so, by doing this, to help people to develop healthier habits at a younger age, we can reduce healthcare costs. There's a lot of economic value to this. And I'm just sitting next to this young lady talking about the economic value. And I see Huntsville as a potential role model for rural communities, not just around this state, but beyond. Because the only way we can multiply what we're doing is online. So we're creating this as a virtual nonprofit, to be able to share the lessons that we learn with other people. This is mine, my wife's legacy will be for everyone in this room that decides to be part of this, because no one individual, no one family, no community can change what has happened. We're on a downward spiral, I have no idea where it's going to end, and I don't like to talk about what I see happening. But the bottom line is what we need, folks, in my opinion, is to get off our duff, go out and play pickleball. And it may not be pickleball, but just whatever's important to the individual, and just to get people moving, because this is a fun challenge that I'm offering to this city. I'm meeting tomorrow with city councilman from Cave Springs, we're going to meet with others. But I've gotten to know and love over the last six months that I volunteered at the senior center, a lot of the folks here, and they're also, some of them are my clients. So it's like, where am I going to start this? Well, it just makes sense. So we need to bring back our rural values, point out what's important. I see this city as a great place to start. My wife and I are doing it together, now we want to get your help and cooperation, if that's possible to whatever extent. And I know everybody's very busy today, got a thousand things. We've got information to share with people, and, you know, those people who are interested, I'd like to talk to after, or however we can go forward. So that's my thought.
Also, Mr. Nelson, do you have a website set up yet that we could take a look at as well?
Well, we have just started something, I had something on Facebook that I started this five years ago, and COVID killed that. But if you look under AHA.Underuniversity, that is the domain name that I own. So on the business end of things, what we're going to do, because this is going to be a virtual nonprofit, is my medical director is from India, and those folks are great with two things. One, healthcare doctors, we got a lot of Indian doctors. The other thing is computers. So we're going to outsource our technology to India, and it's saved us two-thirds of the money. So, I'm a business guy, and I'm always thinking of what's the best way to do this going forward. So, that's our initial plan, and get started. So I would love to be able to build some pickleball courts out here, and move forward, and do whatever is possible at this point, I don't know what y'all need, but I'm open to helping however.
One thing, Chief Thomas?
Sir.
You're the head of the Parks Commission. Do we still have a pickleball setup, two pickleball setups at Mitchison Park still, up at our city park?
I'd heard that.
So if you, so if you need any, if you want to use those for that, you can just let us know. Also, anybody on the council have any questions for Mr. Nelson?
Daryl Jones was running that league, his son owns the Jones Tire Shop up here at the Y, 74 and 412.
Daryl Jones, Jones Tire?
Yes. His son runs that business there, and he can get in touch, he can probably help you with a lot of contacts.
Cool, thank you, that's what I needed, Daryl Jones. Write that down, Daryl Jones, Jones Tire. So, yeah, that's the thing, because the bottom line, and I'll just emphasize it again, is that we're losing faith in each other. We're losing faith in churches, and for whatever possible thing that I can contribute as one lone individual, I have a lot of energy. I have the energy of three monkeys on a hot tin roof, so, you know, I mean, I outrun everybody, it's not even fair for me to play against the 70-year-olds that I work with, but I love beating up on the college kids. Ah, what can this old man do? Well, you have no angle.
I agree with this.
Yeah. She knows. So, it's all about having fun, and bringing back that sense of family and community that we've lost, because y'all, to me, I just love every single wannabe I could get a hug, because it just, we need more people to start caring about something, right? Something, just care about something. And so it's, what can you do today? Not, what have you lost? Not thinking about the past, what can we do today to make a difference today? But that's, and so I say, get off your duff, go out and play, pickleball, or whatever it is that you want to do. So that's what we're bringing to the table. We're just getting started with this, because COVID killed everything that I had done, so we're starting over, and I am building, the final thing is an advisory board before we start the nonprofit. This is my third go-around and last. So what I learned in my first two nonprofits, the first one lasted two years, the last one, 13 years. But with this one, this is going to be the rest of my life, this is it. I said, God, you know, you give me the opportunity to do this and the energy and strength to do it. But with this, we want to build an advisory board, and I'd like someone from the city council, other than the mayor, he's easy, you know, I already got him. But other than the mayor, we need someone to be an advisor with regards to this city and as we go forward. So, that's what I'm hoping we accomplish out of tonight. Does that make sense?
Sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Anybody on council with any questions for Mr. Nelson regarding that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, well, we'll move on, there are no special orders of business tonight. Next thing, item eight is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of February the 12th. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Have a motion by Mr. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Roden. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving the February 12th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, the minutes from the last meeting are approved. We'll move on into our time, our normal time of public comment. Anybody from the public here to make a comment for the council tonight? Seeing none, well, we'll move on to our city department reports. We'll start off with the police department report, Chief Thomas.
Mayor members of the council, you have my submitted report. Really, a real good month, last month, nothing outrageous or outlandish. Getting into training, the officers are moving forward with more schooling, more training for our training officers. We did finally get all of our new radios installed, I think Chief Shen can address this also. We're having no problems out of them, which is unheard of. So I, it's knock on wood, I'm very, very, very grateful for communications where we can, you know, talk to not just other law enforcement agencies, but to our fire and EMS, that's just, I know it sounds like it's crazy to not have that, but we've went my entire career and not had cross-communications like this, and it is fantastic. I'll let Scott talk about the softball fields, they're in great shape now. We're working with the Huntsville School District, and you guys all are aware of the after-hours school pickup issues with the traffic, we've been very patient with that. You know, we've never, we have not had, to my knowledge, not one complaint about the people parking off the side of the road there. But it's becoming a safety concern, and we've talked to the school about the schools, and 100% agreement, they're actually discussing it tonight, the school board, about educating people on not showing up there. It is a state right-of-way, it is their property also, the schools that they're parking on, they're not on the highway. So, it's a little bit of a gray area there, but technically, they can't park on state highways, on state right-of-ways. And we've been, we've had no complaints, so we've not had to worry about enforcement on that. But it's to the point where you're probably going to be getting some calls for some people that are not happy that we won't let them park alongside the road, but it's a safety issue. And it's, you know, this was a step in the right direction from them showing up and being on school property prior to pickup, and, you know, Chief Shen understands, and EMS, you could not get an ambulance or a fire truck in there, there is absolutely no way, if there was some type of an emergency. We're talking about, you know, 60, 70 cars, and that improved, and then it went somewhere else. So we're going to, we're working with the school on that. If you guys have any concerns about it or input, please see me. And finally got our last Connex container for the beginning stages of our build that we're going to have out at the training facility, fire department will be able to use it, we'll be using it for simunition training, they'll be using it for smoke and steam and such. So they're modular, you know what, I think everybody knows what Connex containers are, and we can configure them in a lot of different ways, working with the fire department, and they've got some out there, and hope to build a really nice complex out there for training, not just our training, but training from other agencies that just aren't privileged enough to have these type of things, so. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on to street department, public works, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, we've just finished leveling of the softball fields. We had dirt hauled in from Muskogee, Oklahoma, and sand, and a particular dirt from Muskogee was really set up, I mean, really basic type of red dirt, it looked like, but it has done really well, the girl softball team pitched in and paid for that, and then we've hired an individual who leveled it amazingly, he put a slope on each side and around the bases. First rain we had, everybody's water came off the field, within 30 minutes, it was dry again and playable, the field was. I mean, it was just amazing. And now he's done the baseball field, even though they weren't going to do it, he came to, yesterday, actually, and leveled theirs. But anyway, the girl softball team, now like I said, pitched in and helped with the dirt. And then, we do have a little bit on the backside of the field that he would like to come back, maybe later in the midsummer when it's dry, and take a hump off the back of the field, for it to drain out the back. Right now, there's just a little bit of a hump where it stays behind the base path, but it does settle there. But the dirt was just amazing, how But the dirt was just amazing how well it sinks into the dirt, the ground itself. And then the drainage, we put drainage around the edges of the fence. That was this gentleman, Jeff Barnes, idea that did the leveling. And it just is crazy. I wish I'd had pictures to put up here and show you what it did. But between that and the checklist for all the the different things that the girls needed and wanted, that they asked for, new softball or batting cage net. And there was, do I?
Put in electric.
Electric for their dugouts, heaters. They paid for the heaters. We had electric put in dugouts. But anyway, I think we've got the checklist for everything they needed and wanted, and they seem to be happy. And the field is in amazing shape. But I mean, for the future, for the little kids, for any older league softball and baseball as well as they're both really in good shape. And now we're, what are we working on now? I'd already forgot what else we, we were out on the bypass and we finished the dirt work around the signs, the welcome to Huntsville signs. That took a little more work than we anticipated. But the state was happy with that, so everything is good there. And then with that said, now we're working on culverts and that type of stuff here in town. Trying to get caught back up on that and trimming trees back off off streets. And also, we're in the, probably had a paving project for the park and and fixing all the big big patches that need to be fixed right on Kane Street and College Avenue, plus some others around town that are a lot larger than what we could patch ourselves with our machine to put new asphalt in these holes. And I know College and Kane are extremely bad just from cuts in the water, from water lakes and or just in general needed attention. And there's only one person bid on it, which we had the money and the street budget to do it. And he said within two weeks, he can be here to patch all the spots in College and Kane. Hopefully, the streets will be in a lot better shape within a couple of weeks. But like I said, most, for the most part, we're going to cover that. The water department's going to help us with part of it on on their cuts in the street. And then I guess that's about it. But the Pavcon's the one that put in the bid and they have done a really good job in the past. And that's the only person that even bid on it. And like I said, hopefully, within two weeks, we'll have this, that project done. Any questions on anything softball or baseball or patching streets and speed bumps and that type of stuff? We are replacing speed bumps right now that had gotten wiped out during the snow and all that. And the one on Edith, we got those, we just started back on that type of stuff today and fixing the ones that were ripped off the street.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Fire Department, Mr. Davis.
The only thing I need to add to my report would be, I mentioned last month, the number of leaks we were dealing with at that point. That seems to be all we've done since, to the point that we had pressure loss that affected about fifty or sixty houses at the higher elevations. Our storage tank was struggling to stay full. I mean, honestly, I kind of blame Mr. Phillips. As soon as he told me Pavcon was coming, we've done nothing with their street. But at the end of last week, we did find a couple. Hard to find six-inch breaks, and it seemed to build our pressure back up. Chief Shen was able to confirm that their home was back to normal. Altogether, we estimate between seven and eight million gallons of water loss costing us roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. Outside of that, I do have a little good news. We officially have a scheduled leak to start the new pumps up for the new storage tank. That's supposed to be the first week of April. And from there, we'll have a few small things to do.
Anybody with, any questions for Mr. Davis? Thanks, sir. Fire Department, Chief Shen. We 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 got, we got our new engine coming, right?
I'm glad he was able to say finally, because I haven't got that. I was able to track down somebody with KME to discover, number one, they said, instead of March, April, it'll probably be April, May before we get it. And they did correct, they did tell me that the fire engine is not being built in Louisiana. It's being built in Pennsylvania at their old plant. That all of their custom cabs have been moved to Louisiana, but that the commercial cabs are still being built in Pennsylvania. That was the first time in this multiple years that somebody has confirmed that. So, so we're still trying to figure out where we need to fly in and find out what's going on down there. But they've assured me that it's in production and they think they've got it located within the continental United States. So, we're going to move forward on that stuff there. Couple of different things. Again, we're in the process. You know, we have the good news. We had a bunch of our guys that are now checked off and are on longer probationary firefighters, which means that they're able to make interior attacks and do some really useful things for us. The downside of that is we have to buy them, we've got to get all their turnouts, buy them turnouts. And if we could just get a standard size, that would be useful. Because every time we have somebody leaves or some kind of odd-shaped size, like I can't reuse their stuff. So, right now, to get a full set of turnouts for somebody, it's forty-five hundred dollars for a full set. Get a helmet, coat, bunker pants, boots, gloves. And that starts to add up pretty quick, as I'm sure you you know, going into our budget there. We are working on, and Chief Thomas and I have talked about it different times, not only with shipping containers out at the burn site, which which is a very useful, you know, for years, Springdale would come over before they they got their their big fancy one. They would come over and do some of their training burns at our site there. Because you have to, when you do firefighter one, firefighter two training, you've got to be able to do live burns. And that's that's a significant advantage for us, being able to take guys out there and to go through that. So, we're working on it. You've also seen the shipping container that we have out at Station Two. We're going to be using it, we'll put it on the south end of the building. I discovered that Scott Phillips really didn't have much to do. So, he's going to come out and assist us with that. Bless his heart, so we can break up some naps here and there. But we're going to set that up here in town so that we can have a place where we could do some sort of training. We've got a different machine that will kind of smoke it up. Because our guys, as a volunteer firefighter, we train twice a month, right? We have second and fourth Thursdays of every month. They come in, they get a lot of training, which is about half of what ISO and NFPA would like for them to have a month. When we go out to the training facility, it's about six miles, seven miles from outside of town. So, we take all of our rigs out there. Very useful, because we can get hotter burns, we can do different things there. But we are six, seven miles outside of town. So, anytime we could do something here in town where we can give them that chance to get in that zero-visibility environment, kind of work with their techniques and their skills, that's going to be a significant advantage for us. And we've got, you know, we've got some great training props out there. I think I've put in there that we're going to be doing a fourth blinter class come up May and it'll be for everybody in the county, anybody that wants to come in and do that stuff. But we've got really good buy-in with our current firefighters. They're doing a lot of training, they're coming in and giving extra time and doing those things. And I'm very proud of that. We are still struggling with our surrounding apartments. Today, this afternoon, we got called, we had to go to a grass brush fire in the Kingston, Witter, Aurora area. They'd been paged thirty minutes before we before we were, we get there, before Kingston gets a truck there, Witter Aurora, before Witter Aurora gets a truck there. You know, and it's just, they struggle, the rural areas. And, you know, these are folks that are having to go outside of their communities to go find someplace to work. And so, daytime, it's it's a struggle. But again, it's it's, it puts a strain on us having to do that, but we still need them when we have big fires here. So, I do not, do not have a good answer as to how to improve the number of volunteer firefighters we have in this community. So, we're going to continue to work on, our recruiting committee's trying to come up with ideas. But this is not a Mass County problem, it's a United States problem. So, we'll we'll continue to work on it and see what we can come up with. I think we've talked about this before. In January of this year, the fire code for the state of Arkansas was updated. Went from the Arkansas Fire Code of twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-one. The, there are many provisions that have changed. The school's emergency plans were were not in line with that, so we've been working with them. Bailey Cotton, bless his heart, he's the one that they pushed this on too. So, he's he's trying to develop it. We've we've got a plan working out for the rest of this school year and trying to get them where they're in compliance for next school year. And so, they have given us, we now have in both of our battalions, the the Dodge trucks we drive, we have keys for Knox boxes and we have several structures around town. We're trying to get all the apartments and everybody else to put Knox boxes in as well. But the school has given us key fobs, so any building that we need to access inside the school district, we can get in there with those fobs. I think Chief Thomas and Bunch already has has access to those kind of things. So, that that makes it simpler for us to to get in there. The number of calls continue to escalate as far as what we're dealing with. We're continuing to see those. One of the things has been typically about seventy-nine to eighty percent of our calls are medical calls. But we've seen an increase, especially during that the last month of fires. We've got a lot more fires coming in, both structure and grass fires. I'm hoping that's a trend that's just a short-lived one and not something we're going to have to deal with all year. Other than that, that's pretty much where we are at this point. I'm feeling pretty good about where we are. We'll see if that mythical creature of a KME fire engine eventually arrives. We'll see. Any questions, comments?
Just just a comment, I saw you.
Made a note there that said one hundred percent of the structure fires occur between five and ten. Is that because people are coming?
January, February, yeah. Well, at nighttime, well, five at night and ten in the morning. So, it's overnight. Yeah. And I've, we've got some breakdowns. We've done some different breakdowns, looking at different things over a five-year period. We're still working on some of those, trying to develop some of those numbers. But, yeah, most of what we have are nighttime fires, you know, when people are actually in their homes. And a lot of electrical fires. We've been dealing lots of electrical fires. I was surprised, because a lot of times it's heating fire, somebody using some kind of, some kind of gas heater or something else that's in it. But mainly, it's been electrical fires.
Any other questions for the chief? Thanks, sir.
Thanks, folks.
Alright, move on to Finance Director, Ms. Boyd, do you have anything?
I don't. The only thing I would say, if anyone had any questions about the resolution to amend last year's budget, available when we do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we'll move on. Economic Development, Ms. Holt, do you have anything to add to your report?
Yes, I'd just like to thank everybody who was able to make it to the Monday night meeting on the fourth with AEDIs. We presented our, the findings of our strategic survey. And we narrowed that down to the, it actually is narrowed down now to four focus areas that we'll be working on, concentrating on. It'll be housing, workforce development and attraction, business attraction and retention, and infrastructure. So, those are the four focus areas. Our next meeting will be Monday night, May, March twenty-fifth at five-thirty.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Holt? Okay. Mayor's report, Mayor Johnson forwarded this to me before he entered to DC. We had the first meeting of our Wage and Salary Committee for the year and they addressed all the concern, all the concerns in that meeting. And the mayor has asked the same counselors on on the Wage and Salary Committee to serve on the Budget Committee and they have all accepted. And those folks are Ms. Lacy, Ms. Evans, Mr. Roden, and myself. We've had our kickoff meeting with the Arkansas Parks and Tourism to start the process on the splash pad out out there by the walking trail. Also, we're happy to announce that we've received a grant for six-hundred forty thousand and thirty-nine dollars. This is from the Arkansas Department of Commerce, Division of Aeronautics. This is dealing with our airport and building roads, pads, and the new hangar up there. So, I think that's been been in the newspaper as well. So, following up on what Ms. Holt talked about regarding strategic plan meeting, he, the mayor felt that they've had an outstanding meeting there. He appreciated all the representatives from the city that attended the meeting. And after the follow-up meeting on March the fifth, we've now solidified our subcommittees to start focusing on ideas and directives on where we'll be going in the future. And Ms. Holt talked about that as well. And that's everything, that's everything that the mayor sent me. Any questions that that I might be able to answer? Hearing none, we'll go on. You have written reports from the Building Inspector and Animal Control. Also, in your packets were the meeting minutes from the Water and Stewart Commission of February the fifteenth, the Plan Commission meeting of February the twenty-sixth and amended for January twenty-second. And the Economic Development and Tourism Commission meeting from February the twentieth. There is no unfinished business. Onto new business. Item thirteen, sub-item A, this is an ordinance, a proposed ordinance, doing business with the city employees. And at this time, I'd like to ask them, Ms. Fritz, if you please explain the reasoning behind this?
Yeah, so why we're doing this specific ordinance is basically, we have an ordinance in place saying that employees or our city employees, council members can do business with the city. There's also a statute in place as well. The municipal league has recommended that we do a ordinance specifically for an employee to pass it. So, that's why we're doing this ordinance.
So, every time we use one, we'll have to have a new?
I think that would be yes.
Legislative audit also requires it.
So.
By state code.
Yeah, by state code. So, yeah, that's why we're doing that. So, like I said, we have the ordinance saying we can, but every time we have someone that's going to be doing business with the city, then we'll have to do this. I I did want to try to do an overall, general one, but we couldn't do that. So, try to be, make it easier.
Okay.
I might get a motion for the first reading then.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Call second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Olson to put it on his first reading. It was seconded by Mr. Roden. Any further discussion? All those in favor of placing the proposed ordinance on its first reading, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. Ms. Fritz, if you will, please read the ordinance on its first reading in full, please.
We have ordinance number proposed twenty-two-four-three, an ordinance specifically permitting city employees to do limited business with the city. Whereas the City Council of the City of Huntsville has determined that there are certain situations in which it would be beneficial to the City of Huntsville to conduct business with people who are elected, appointed, and or employed with the city along with their immediate family members per ordinance number eleven-two. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash forty-two one oh seven B one authorizes the governing body of a city to enact an ordinance specifically permitting such business. And whereas it is the policy of the City of Huntsville to do business locally whenever possible and economical, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas, section one, that Todd Thomas, Chief of Police, has spent two-hundred and sixty hours working on the Basham Building in his individual capacity between May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three and December third, twenty-twenty-three. That during that time, Todd Thomas did demolition, pressure washing, painting, and general construction. Section two, that Todd Thomas shall be paid thirty-five dollars per hour for one-hundred and thirty hours for a total of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That the remaining one-hundred and thirty hours will be donated time provided by Todd Thomas, passed and approved by the City Council of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas, this thirteenth day of May, twenty-twenty-four.
And the ordinance will be put on its second reading at the April meeting. Moving on to thirteen B, which is a proposed resolution amending the twenty-twenty-three budget. Ms. Boyd, can you elaborate more on that?
Yes, on the Exhibit A, we had administrative budget. We had quite a few items that we just said near all of it. So, I just felt like it was easier to amend the budget to actual. It's an increase of twelve thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars. And mostly, that consisted of finishing the Basham Building and council chamber remodel. Also incorporated the payoff of the Basham Building of nine thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. It included building of the dog kennel. And then there was also the mayor's salary change mid-year. So, all of those things affected that. Economic Development, those were all, everything in here was approved by council verbally. So, this is just cleaning up the the final budget. So, on economic development, we had some things moved to a different line. So, you can see they offset each other. Twelve thousand was allocated at the January twenty-two meeting for the highway signs. And the two thousand dollars was a donation by Butterball for the Picks in the Park events. And the two thousand dollars was a donation by Butterball for the Pigs in the Park events. Fire Department, we just needed to amend some for overage and fill-in labor and a little bit there for health, health coverage increase, let's see, fuel. So on that one, I just picked some numbers to fill in to make it match the actual overage there. And Police Department, we had the camera system grant. That was thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-one and forty-one cents. We knew that was an expense that we were going to have to pay. That was also approved by council. And we had several pay-related items that we had to balance. So, and then I also amended the revenue on adding the Huntsville Schools SRO revenue and the donation from Butterball.
So that left a little over thirty thousand from unallocated general, correct?
Yes, yes. Thirty thousand one hundred twenty-seven and fifty-four cents, which overall was very good for the amount of money, the amount of projects that we had going on, so.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of resolution number proposed five dash twenty-two.
A motion was made to approve the resolution by Mr. Olson and seconded by Ms. Ellis. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, resolution is adopted, five dash twenty-two-four. All right. Onto new business, Gen item thirteen C. This is dealing with code enforcement software. The mayor and, and Mr. Shin, Mr. Jeremy Shin, our new, our new code enforcement officer, I have to say first name since we have so many, it's so like Thomases, so many Thomases. So anyway, he, he, Jeremy and the mayor have been talking about improving the software. Right now, it's a spreadsheet-type system that was handed down from when Mr. McConnell was, was doing code enforcement. And so I'm, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read the note he sent to council first and then read what he has come up with as, as a resolution. Okay. This is from Mr. Shin. "Council members, during the month of February, I have resolved about a dozen previously opened complaints and have made progress on several others. It is my hope that the coming citywide cleanup can be taken advantage of by some of our residents to enable them to clean their properties up. I've tried to encourage many of them to keep this date in mind. We have a few egregious properties that will unfortunately take a bit of time and I will attempt to continue to assist these properties with their progress. During the month, I have worked with several companies to find a case management program that could fit our needs without being exorbitantly expensive. And after nearly twenty phone calls and a half a dozen Zoom meetings, the only program I found that matches that criteria is Comcast's program." And I'm gonna read notes as far as what Comcast can offer. "The Comcast code enforcement software will enable us to better track complaints from start to finish with follow-up scheduling and case actions broken down by week, month, quarter, and year. It will enable us to look at historical data such as person, date, violation, and a few other data points. The program is cloud-based, which will enable us to access the program remotely from the field and utilize off-site, cloud-based storage of records. We will also be able to print notices, forms, and permits from the field or digitally issue notices and forms. We will receive unlimited free support and software enhancements and upgrades at no additional cost. The onboarding and training will also come at no cost and can be done in days. And the program will also be somewhat configured to fit our needs. This software is an investment in efficiency and effectiveness and it will also serve to protect the city from liability by creating a uniform, fair, and orderly case management system." Just giving you all a heads up on this because I would feel better, Mr. Shin cannot be here. He has training.
I think he was on duty.
He's on, he's on duty at Sprint, at Sprint Fire Department tonight, so he couldn't be here. So I would feel better, just, this is just an informational thing right now. And then Mr. Shin and the mayor can bring, bring as far as monetary details and all that at the April meeting. Just giving you a heads up on this, though. All right. Anybody with any questions on that?
Is there a cost?
I did not really get a cost on that. So, so that, that's part of the reason I feel, feel better to have Mr. Shin and Mayor Dawson discuss it further with you.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll. That was just informational. So we'll move on to announcements. Water and Stewart Commission meeting will be Thursday, March twenty-first at four PM at, that's the water office. Economic Development Commission meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at eight-thirty. I'm assuming that at our best annex, at, at the harvest annex. Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, March twenty-fifth, six o'clock here in the chambers. One of my favorite times is your farmer's market is opening up on the square on Tuesday, April the second. It'll be held every Tuesday, Tuesday and Saturday's usually seven AM to noon. And then the next meet, next scheduled meeting of the City Council will be Monday, April the eighth at six PM. Anybody with anything else to bring before council?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the council. I don't know what the vote was and quite honestly, I greatly appreciate the offer that was given. I don't know whose idea it was on this resolution. I did not ask for this. I was just, I was grateful to have the opportunity to work on, you know, something for the community, something that hopefully will be used by the community a lot and, and to preserve some history for, from Huntsville. And I've, I've had nothing but positive feedback. I don't think most people are gonna say negative things to me about it. But if you're hearing things about it that I need to be working on, let me know. This guy here has, and his crew has just went overboard with helping anything that I needed. And I've learned a lot working with them and I don't know what they've learned from. They learned to not, not be around and not answer the phone is what they've learned, so. Anyway, the awning hopefully will be done this week. It looks like the windows may be in this week. And we're staining and sealing the floors tomorrow in the next couple of days. So we really hope it's gonna, if everything goes right, it'll be usable by the public in, I'm gonna say, two weeks, so. But more work for Katie because she's gonna have to take reservations and all that stuff, so. But again, thank you no matter what, but I, I did not ask for that. I was, I was grateful to be able to work on a piece of history, so.
Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd like, I would, I'd like to say, I'm sure, I'm sure the rest of the council agrees with me. We're really appreciative of the way all of our city departments work, work together on, on, on diff, on different projects. I mean, some, sometimes fires work with water, waters work with public works, et cetera. It's just good to be in a community where everybody just works together so well towards economic. And I mean, this is my fourteenth year on the council and I think our community is probably as best as it's been in, in my term of office here, so.
Chief, this is, I'm talking to Chief Shin. Twenty-seven and a half years I've been here and this is the, the best we've worked together. And it's taken a lot of people, a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of growing to get to this point, I think, but it, I mean.
Have you been here for two centuries, I can tell you. This is the best it's ever been. I don't, I don't wanna jinx anything here.
Slight exaggeration.
You never know what God's gonna do next, so.
By the way, Mr. Nelson, if you, if you want to volunteer for pickleball, Chief Shin can help you with that.
I'm going with the two centuries.
Yes, no, we did not, we did not address that, one last thing. We did, the City of Huntsville was well represented at the St. Paul Donkey Basketball fundraiser game with some of Chief Thomas's officers and some of my firefighters. It was rigged, the outlaws, the outlaws defeated us. I'm looking for a recount here, we're trying to see what was done, but.
There was a lot of puns going around that we can't talk about in live here. But a lot of, a lot of money could be coming in off of T-shirts and bumper stickers that we just changed. It was a lot of, a lot of fun and I think everybody had a good time, almost everybody.
Yes, yes. So anyway, the important part is there were no workers comp teams on the asset.
Yep, we appreciate that. Anybody, anybody with anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Roden for the meaning to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned.